Hi, my name is Emily McManway and I stand before you as a mother and activist, but most importantly, a concerned member of the community. I'm going to start reading the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office Mission Statement, which is to serve, protect, and defend the community while preserving the rights and dignity of all. In this situation with Josiah Penner, the 15-year-old that was killed by an undercover going 66 miles per hour in a 45 mile per hour zone, I look, but I don't see the dignity in the way the family nor the community is being treated in this situation. I've been to a few protests in this situation where the officers line up, they laugh, they joke, they point at us, and there's no dignity in that. I continue to see the sheriff lie to us, make up facts and stories to protect his own, and there is no way to justify the habitual defiant actions of Officer Montesi, who has had four accidents in a two-year period and even hitting another pedestrian. And it's horrible to watch as a citizen, an officer of the law who is supposed to protect us, be an example, and their example is time after time, all of his actions and accidents are deemed excusable or unavoidable. The family and the community seek answers, justice, and accountability, and we don't, where do we go to seek these requests? How do we get about? And, you know, the chain of command is very broken in District One, so we'd like to know where do we go from here. Thank you.
Richard Guerrero, followed by Judy Gant.
I have some pictures to share with y'all. You want to pass them around? Is that okay? Except for where? Good morning. My name is Richard Guerrero. I've been a Hillsborough County resident for three years. I'm here today to voice my concerns as a people of Hillsborough County. Before Josiah Penner was hit by Deputy Montesi on January 11th, I did not know the Penner family. After seeing the lack of communication to the family and to the community, I thought it was time to stand up. Where is the accountability in Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office? Montesi has been in four traffic crashes in his tenor at Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. The last crash took the life of a 15-year-old youth. Montesi was driving 66 in a 45. If I was driving 21 miles an hour with the speed limit and hit a pedestrian, killing them, I would go to jail. Montesi's reason for speeding was I was catching up to my unit. Is catching up to your unit worth it when it becomes a public safety issue? This day and age with GPS, cell phones, traffic cams, is it really necessary to be unsafe and to speed, especially when you're a deputy? In February of 2017, Montesi clipped a man with his patrol car because he was distracted by his computer. The man Montesi hit was wearing a yellow safety vest for visibility. In that accident, Montesi was again speeding, doing 41.4, 16 miles an hour over the speed limit. How many accidents have to happen before public safety is a concern? When does serve and protect start? Why is Philip J. Montesi not being held accountable for his negligence? As the community has pulled together over this issue and had multiple protests, it has become clear that Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office is using more and more authoritarian police-state-style actions to deter the community from uniting for this cause. The police-state-style tactics used by Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office are used to intimidate we, the people. This is not acceptable. Peaceful protests and assemblies should not be infringed and hindered by intimidation and military-style tactics, nor should deputies mock and make fun of protesters. Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office also needs to understand that photography is not a crime. I've been arrested for filming Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. The best they could come up with was nonviolent resisting arrest. Okay? It's shameful, the things that are going on in this county. Shameful. These are badge bullies. They are not public servants. And I beg that you are receptive and understanding to the points that I am making, and I hope that my pictures can reiterate that. Y'all have a good day. Thank you for your time.
Judy Gant, followed by Sharon Calvert. Judy Gant? Judy Gant here? Okay. Sharon Calvert, followed by Ed Reyes.
I'm Sharon Calvert. When the end justifies the means, there's a problem. Potential legal issues with the offer transportation tax hike were brought up before the election. Each of you knew these issues, whether you were on the board or you were a candidate at that time, because thanks to Commissioner White, he publicly spoke of them. But instead of addressing the issue or questioning or warning your constituents that there could be issues, these issues were ignored as if they didn't exist. It's always risky to ignore any potential legal issue or violation of state statute. Where were some questions? Where were some questions on how this would impact the $800 million transportation plan that had already been funded? Where were the questions about how this will impact mobility fees? They were nowhere to be found. When the attitude is, you don't really care whether the voters understood what they were voting on, or whether what was being voted on was all legal, because the end result that matters is that a $16 billion tax hike gets passed, that's a problem. And ironically, after watching some of the last BOCC meetings and the BOCC workshop and Hartboard meetings, it appears that some of you who are closest to this and receiving the billions don't know what was voted on either. But now the big mess is getting messier by bonding out the tax proceeds of a taxes under litigation. More troubling is approving a bond issue without even telling the taxpayers what it's paying for, and then most disturbing is the county suing its own citizens and perhaps making it very hard and preventing them from being able to repeal or change things in the future for 30 years. The workshop that you held confirmed to the public what was being stated before the election. There's no money in a $16 billion, 30-year tax for new roads, and each of you knew that. Every commissioned district except one has constituents in unincorporated Hillsborough County. You're going to owe these constituents an explanation. You're going to have to explain to them why they're not going to get any new road capacity. It was all sold with flashy mailers, and this one says you're going to reduce congestion along Hillsborough, I mean, along Del Maybrun Hillsborough Avenue, which happened to be state roads. FDOT doesn't even have a plan for that. So unfortunately, when the end justifies the means, you're going to have a big mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Edward Reyes, followed by Jerry Courtwright.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. So today I want to talk about justice answers and change. So the story that came out, I'm the attorney for Josiah Penner. So the story came out with the press conference with the sheriff Chad, and it's fundamentally different than what's really happening. So we've spoken to a lot of witnesses, a lot of people in the area, and it's a lot different than what's actually happening. So we're definitely pushing for answers, and we spoke to the attorney yesterday for the sheriff's office, and we would hope that you guys can help us with pushing those efforts on having them answer back to us, because it's been a long delay, so we're hoping for some sort of guidance and support from you guys. Number two, there's a memorial that was set aside for Josiah, and it was removed, and we're asking if maybe we can put the memorial back, or if there's a way that we could put it somewhere that it's not blocking people from walking, but it's still there, that we can give memorial to Josiah. Number three, change. So we're teaming up with a lot of efforts with TBO, Vision Zero, Mark Sharp, and Pedal Power to see if we can help on pedestrian safety, and we're hoping that the officials in the board can support us and maybe put some money into and some initiatives into making the roads safer, making the area and certain urban communities safer, because in certain areas in Hillsborough County, there's more crosswalks, there's more safety precautions, and it's usually areas that have more, they're more affluent areas. So we would hope that some of the funds can be allocated to areas that are not as affluent, of course, to see if we can create more safety measures for those people that live in the area, primarily because a lot of those people in the area are walking a lot. So we're hoping to see what you guys can help us with, to see if we can make the roads safer in those areas. And I'm just really looking for answers, and maybe if there's a person that we can speak to directly to see how we can make, to effectuate that change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Reyes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jerry Courtwright, followed by Priscilla Havel.
Good morning. My name is Jay Courtwright. I'm a member of Hope. We ask you to establish an ongoing fund of $10 to $20 million annually for affordable housing. To quote from the February 5th, 2019 Affordable Housing Public Forum report, "Significant affordability challenges exist, particularly among very low-income families." Also from the forum report, "104,540 households," or 20% of Hillsborough County households, "pay more than 50% of their income for housing." Of those over 104,000 households, about 75,000 are very low-income families at or below 50% of MFI. An example of some of our jobs with low wages, those below 50% of MFI for a family of four, are posted on the county's Employment Opportunities page. A head start, early head start teacher assistant at $27,144 a year, which is 43% of MFI. A solid waste equipment operator at $24,273, that's 38% of MFI. Another at 46% of MFI. A transportation worker at $24,980, that's 39% of MFI. Also on the county's website are openings for hourly wage jobs. For example, a complex assistant at $846 an hour, an event chef and cook for $950 an hour, an electronics technician for $15 an hour. $15 an hour is $31,200 a year, or 49% of MFI for a family of four. That's if a person works at this hourly wage 40 hours every week of the year with no days off. The Tampa Airport also has jobs with very low wages. An airline check-in agent at $22,600, that's 36% of MFI for a family of four. A supervisor for customer service managing 30 to 50 employees requires prior experience and must work one weekend a month. $21,000 a year, that's 33% of MFI. And a mailroom clerk for $19,000. We ask you as our commissioners to establish an ongoing fund of $10 to $20 million annually to create, rehabilitate, and preserve apartments and homes for seniors and working families. We ask you to establish this ongoing fund with a clear definition on how it is to be used to assure there is decent affordable housing available for these hard-working families year after year, in good times and not so good times.
Thank you, ma'am. Priscilla Havel, followed by Julya Penner.
Good morning. My name is Priscilla Havel. Today marks a crucial day for everybody that knows both the victim, my cousin Josiah Penner, and Deputy Montesi. If for a moment we take away the badge and the uniform, Philip Montesi was recklessly driving by going 21 miles per hour over the speed limit. It has been said that Officer Philip Montesi was a part of a surveillance team and was en route to joining them, but there was no high-speed pursuit taking place, and even if there had been, there are traffic laws that even officers must abide. According to the media, Sheriff Cronister stated that he has a kid the same age as my cousin. Had it been his kid that was hit and killed, he would be demanding justice, and the boys in the blue would go through hell and high water to make sure that he would get justice for his son. But we want the same justice for my cousin that each of you would want for your family member. The officer has also had three prior accidents in a very short span of time. Why, when he realized that he hit something or someone, didn't he stop instantly? Instead of driving on and only returning when other officers showed up to the scene? That is unacceptable. That is a hit-and-run vehicular homicide and whatever else you would charge a civilian with that carried out the same actions and committed this crime, and it is a crime that deserves justice. My cousin was only 15 years too young. He was very loved by his family, friends, and his community. His life was taken too soon. Justice for Josiah.
Julya Penner, followed by Arlene Bataya.
I'm Arlene Bataya. I thank you for allowing us to come in today and be able to speak.
Excuse me. Excuse me, ma'am. What's your name?
Arlene Bataya.
Where's your, did, did your Penner speak? He didn't speak? She does not want to speak? Okay. Okay.
Okay. As a child, I was taught that we should trust in law enforcement, but along the way, I learned that trust must be earned, even from a law enforcer. Mr. Commissioner, that deputy has failed us all, even you, even all of us. Where was the oath that he took to protect and serve? And as a first responder, he took an oath to render assistance to those who are injured or endangered. But on January 11th, he did no such thing. He ran over Josiah and fled from the scene of the crime, a crime that he himself committed. It has been lies behind lies. First, that it was too dark outside at 6:30 PM. Second, that he didn't notice he hit Josiah. Third, it came from Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department, that he was working undercover, as if that is a reason, that's a reason enough to excuse him from killing a young boy. Well, we took the dark, the darkness at night to the test. We found out that at 6:30 at night, there was still plenty of lights. All the way up to 9 o'clock PM, there was still a lot of light where you can see it clearer. Okay, he's been in four accidents, injuring a man with his patrol car, and now killing Josiah. My words and concern is this, how many? How many? How many more have to die before he is fired? How many more have to die before he is held accountable? What if it was your mother, father, or children that has to die because of his neglect? We want justice and accountability. We want him fired and held with charges for the crime that he committed. It's just like if he was one of us, I mean, what is it going to take? Just because he's a law enforcer doesn't mean he has the right to take a life. I mean, how many more accidents does he need to go have before he's fired? Four in such a short period of time and taking someone's life? That's too much already. That's one too many. My niece is not going to have her son to see him married, have children, graduate from college. All that privilege was taken from her, and it's not fair. We want justice. We want him fired and charged, just like any of us civilians would be. That's it.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. I don't mind you applauding, I don't mind you cheering, but the outbursts has to stop, or we will clear the room. Ayana, is it Ayana Penner? Ayana? Does she want to speak? Okay. Lila Lilliquis, followed by Jason Carey.
That one was from Ms. Kent? Okay. I wanted to specify that.
Yeah, it has to go around and then come back to Ms. Kent.
Okay, so Ms. Kent could get that one on top. Good morning, County Commission. Lila Lilliquis, Brandon, Florida. As a visionary for our community of Brandon, I come to you today to request your involvement in turning a potential boondoggle into a wonderful park. Three years ago, I presented this architectural presentation to Commissioner Stacy White. At the time, he seemed impressed and happy to help preserve this natural canopy of oak trees. Today, I come to you to request that you recognize that there was no public notice given to the community of Brandon for the contract to purchase this property to construct a new library less than a half mile from our existing library. The reason given was parking. However, I attend many roundtable events on a monthly basis and have never had a problem with parking. I met with the realtor, Paul Cross, in December 2018, and expressed our interest in purchasing the property. You see, on Veterans Day, I was awarded an Eagle Award from Walt Razek, Razek from the Veterans Affairs Council of Hillsborough County. This Edwin Porterfield Award was to acknowledge citizens for keeping the American spirit alive. I was allowed to present the Brandon Memorial Park to our veterans. I'm sorry, this is disrespectful, I think if you're laughing.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lilliquis, we weren't laughing at you. It was a, my apologies.
I just thought that, you know, I just thought that maybe you would pay some attention to what I was talking about, since it's your district. I'll go back to that last paragraph that you guys probably missed. I met with the realtor, Paul Cross, in December 2018 and expressed our interest in purchasing the property. You see, on Veterans Day, I was awarded an Eagle Award from Walt Razek, Veterans Affairs Council of Hillsborough County. This Edwin Porterfield Award was to acknowledge citizens for keeping the American spirit alive. I was allowed to present the Brandon Memorial Park to our veterans. While there, I met Colonel Edward Eddie P. Phillips, Commissioner, Sixth Mission Support Group, MacDill Air Force Base. Colonel Phillips grew up in Queens, New York. Colonel Phillips became emotional when he saw the Twin Tower Fountains, the Reflecting Pond for Pennsylvania, and the face of the fountains reflecting the Pentagon Building. He shared with me his story of driving into the Pentagon that 9/11 morning. With no cellphone, he stopped to ask what was going on with the airspace. He would have not, he would have most likely been a casualty had he not stopped to question what was going on. He signed my petition and wanted to be involved. We are military-strong in Brandon, and we desperately need to create a passive park with an amphitheater and a post-traumatic stress recovery center for our soldiers returning. In closing the Brandon Community Plan, well-established, the need for green spaces and connecting the parks, I was a part of that committee, and that was over the last 15 years. I've been on many committees. The parks, from the parks, from the community plan, a quote that I want to read to you from Candace Knapp.
Thank you, Ms. Lilliquis.
Can I just do that quote?
No, ma'am, your three minutes are up.
I was interrupted by you guys laughing.
Your three minutes are up, Ms. Lilliquis.
Do you guys see how I'm seated when I come to the Hillsborough County Commission meeting?
Ms. Lilliquis.
This is wrong. You guys interrupted me.
Ms. Lilliquis, your three minutes are up. Ms. Lilliquis, your three minutes are up.
Okay, it's fine, it's fine. But this is my point, I'm bullies.
Your three minutes are up.
Bullies. You're bullies.
Jason Carey, followed by Tammy Penner.
Just want to say the way she was treated was unacceptable, first off.
Look.
No, it's okay. Don't waste my time. Don't waste my time, brother.
Hold up, sir.
My name is Jason. I'm 35 years old and I'm the father of a beautiful little girl.
Excuse me, sir.
Don't waste my time, bro.
I'm not wasting your time.
Yeah, you are. I live in Old Seminole Heights. I'm here today to talk about two things, grief and accountability. First, a child was taken from his family by the hands.
Sir, I'm asking you to please stop. I'm going to get back to you, okay?
You wasting my time right now?
I'm getting back to you.
Is the clock counting?
Your three minutes hasn't started yet.
Go.
Your three minutes hasn't started. I did not interrupt her. I didn't waste her time.
Y'all was smirking and laughing, I seen you. We all seen you.
Sir, I'm going to, I'm going to. Who is that? That's the second time you've done that, sir. One more time, you're gone. Okay? Now, again, I've said no outbursts, and I'm not cutting your tab, you still have three minutes. Your three minutes is on the clock. You can start now.
Like I said, my name is Jason, I'm 35 years old, I'm the father of a beautiful little girl. I live in Old Seminole Heights, and I'm here today to talk about two things, grief and accountability. First, a child was taken from his family at the hands of a sheriff's deputy who at the time was breaking law by traveling 21 miles per hour over the speed limit. This is indisputable. This deputy had been involved in multiple similar incidents previously without accountability. This specific act of criminal negligence occurred adjacent to a school zone where children crossed the road with frequency. This deputy was driving, was driving so fast that he could not stop when he saw a child walking a bicycle across. He couldn't stop, that's how fast he was driving. So instead, he had to swerve and hit another kid. That's unacceptable. So I wonder what Josiah was thinking when he was laying there in the street dying out. I know the family thinks about this every single day, one of the worst deaths imaginable. And the, you know, they cry and hurt every single day, and meanwhile, you know, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department, they, they've done nothing to mitigate this grief. You guys have done nothing to mitigate this grief, and this is unacceptable. Had the roles been switched, like my boy back there said, any one of us would have been charged with vehicular manslaughter at the very least, bank on it. Meanwhile, Chad Cronister is trying his hardest to offset the blame to the family and sweep this under the rug, and that is unacceptable. Tampa, like most cities in this country, has a severe lack of police accountability. When unarmed people of color get shot in the back or chased into ponds to drown or run down by, you know, official vehicle at high rates of speed, that's unacceptable. So I'm here today to tell you that if anyone, regardless of the costume they're wearing, regardless, if they want to hurt my kid, they're not going to survive tonight, I guarantee it. I every day carry a Glock 19, I'm highly trained, and I don't mess around. I have no reservations about what's right and wrong, and I will defend my family, and I think that that sentiment is something that's widely grown here in Tampa. Nobody respects the police here. Maybe where you all live in the affluent neighborhoods, maybe they do, but I'm telling you, the bulk of your constituency, they don't see police as public servants. They don't see somebody that's there to protect them, not anymore. I'm not sure if they ever did. So with that said, we're tired of it. We are tired of burying our kids. We're tired of it. And you're tasked today with two choices, okay? You can sit there and smirk, you know, like the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office did when we held our rallies, you can smirk and you can laugh and try to videotape us and undermine what we're doing, and you look the other way, you know, and hope this gets swept under the rug, you know? Or, choice number two, you can actually hold this scumbag cop accountable for his actions. You can do what should have been done the first time he broke the law and hurt somebody. You can hold him accountable, you can take his badge, and you can charge him with criminal misconduct, anything, vehicular manslaughter. Think about it, if it was us, what would you charge us with? Keep that in mind, all right? All I'm saying is this is unacceptable, highly unacceptable, and we have no faith in your police or sheriff's departments anymore. Prove us wrong.
My name is Tammy Penner, and I am Josiah's grandmother. On January 11th, the negligence of Officer Montesi hurt my grandson's life, and it has destroyed my family. This was the officer's fourth accident. Two was considered avoidable, one was considered excusable. What is this fourth? Should be. Should be vehicular homicide. The sheriff is enabling this officer. You hit something going 21 miles per hour over the speed limit, go down the road and come back. That's leaving scene of an accident. Was he issued a citation? The only thing the department can seem to focus on is Josiah was not in the crosswalk. So is that probable cause to hit and kill someone? This officer was distracted by something in his car and was not paying attention, something we as citizens get cited for. And the news report, Cronister said the officer was asking for the benefit of the doubt. The definition of that is to decide if you will believe someone even though you are not sure that what the person is saying is true. We don't believe him, because nothing he's saying is true. Maybe if proper measures were taken in his first pedestrian accident, the second one wouldn't have happened. Stop enabling this officer. This officer needs to be arrested, charged, tried, and convicted. We come before you today because we want justice for Josiah. We are his voice. As my shirt says, I am Josiah.
We have reached the 45-minute time limit. However, we have four more speakers now, I'd like to hear from them. So I'm going to ask for a motion to waive the rules. A motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp and White to, I'm sorry, and Murman to waive the rules, allow the other four speakers to come forward. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Jesse Penner, followed by Jahari Penner. Jesse Penner?
You don't want to speak.
Okay. Jahari Penner? Does Jahari want to speak? I have Rogers, I don't have another name says Rogers for affordable housing.
Good morning, and I would like to thank the commission for allocating the $5.125 million for affordable housing. However, I have a question based on the presentation Ms. Howell presented at the last board meeting I attended. It was stated that the goal is to assist 250 families with affordable housing, and the amount allocated for that is $2,768 and, excuse me, I'm sorry, $2,768,195, and which averages $11,072.78 per household. And my question is, what is the goal in carrying out this agenda? Because with the cost of housing increasing constantly and basically back to where it was before the crash, what's the goal? How are we going to achieve that objective? Because at that time, before the crash, Hillsborough County was assisting families with up to $65,000 a year with down payment assistance, which was a significant amount higher than what we have today. So will those funds be leveraged with other programs to accomplish the goal? Are we really not planning to achieve that goal of helping 250 families with this funds you have available? That's really my concern. How are we going to achieve that agenda? Is there anyone that can clarify this, or can it be addressed at a later date?
Is Ms. Howell here? She's not, she's not here right now, ma'am. We'll get, okay, Ms. Wise will get with it. It's Ma'de Wise in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry, Geraldine Rogers Tooms. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Wise will talk to it. Our last speaker is, no, she was our last speaker. Okay. That finishes the speakers we have. Let me, let me say this. In no way were we trying to be disrespectful to Ms. Lilliquist at all. At all were we trying to do that. We weren't trying to be disrespectful to anyone in the audience. For those people that are here for Josiah Penner, you have our deepest sympathy. I don't understand what you're going through. I've come close to a child being shot and almost losing him, but we, we, on the behalf of this board, you have our deepest sympathy. As far as the sheriff goes, we have no jurisdiction over the sheriff's office. We only allocate the funds nearly to the sheriff and his budget. We have no jurisdictions. Also, if we can't make any comments, because I understand there's pending litigation in this matter. So we, as a county commission, can't, can't really get involved in that because of mere factors that, one, we have no jurisdiction over the sheriff, and two, there's pending litigation. So on behalf, on behalf of this board, you have our deepest sympathy. Now, we can't allow any more speaking. We have rules. We can't allow any more speaking, but you have our deepest sympathy. Okay? I may have a motion to accept the consent agenda. A motion by Commissioner Murman, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve the consent agenda. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Yes, Commissioners, we go to your time certainties.
Justice for Josiah!
Justice for Josiah!
Serve and protect, not swear with a black!
Serve and protect, not swear with a black!